Is a stroke of 5:30 if we would please call this meeting to order. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation from Alderman Vaughn and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Good evening. I am the heavenly Father, I am the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I am the big brother, I am the redeemer, and I am salvation. Father God again, your handmade service that you allowed your angels to watch over all day long and Lord you alive your Holy Spirit to direct us back to this appointed place to handle these affairs of this city. We thank you so much for being a good God, a God that say you'll never leave us nor would you forsake us, a God that say you won't put no morderment on us than we can bear. We thank you so much Father God and we pray right now, God that you will bless the mayor and the board and all the department of his and all the city employee. Father God that we would do the job and the task that we was elected to do and appointed to do. We ask you that you would please forgive us of all our sins, Father God, known and unknown, sin and unseen. God, thank you so much for loving us, teaching us how to love one another in spite of all our difficulties and misunderstandings because you said, God, that you love you one another the way you love us. Lord, would you thank you so much for being who you are and what you are. And Father God, I ask you that you would just fill this place with your Holy Spirit. Father God, that our minds and our heart would be always on you and the decision that we made for the citizens of Starkville. We thank you for being a righteous God, a holy God. We thank you so much for being a God that is able to do all things but fail. God, let's say you won't put no morderment on us than we can bear. We thank you so much for being that great God. God, would you thank you for being a bridge over troubled water. Thank you for being a shelter in a time of storm. And most of all, thank you for being our God and we your servant, being our Father and we your little children. Thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. Thank you for your righteousnessness and your holiness. God, we praise you. We praise you. We love you because of who you are and what you are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here. This will be our last meeting for 2018, at least to our knowledge, our last, our less regular recess meeting for 2018. So we appreciate everyone being here. Our next order of business will be approval of the official agenda, including consented items. Do I have any changes to the consent, consented items from anyone on the board?
Move approval name.
Do you have, I have a motion for approval of the agenda, official agenda with the consented items from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second from Alderman Sistrung. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and I will read the consented items, starting with the minutes. We have consideration of the minutes of the December 4th, 2018 regular meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman and the city of Starkville. Then under department business, we have airport consideration of approval of goal service plan invoice and agreement with QTPOD Petroleum. Under engineering, we have consideration of approval of the resolution committing the required 20% matching funds in the amount of $4,724.40 to be derived from the city of Starkville capital improvement bond funds to leverage said ARC funds for the proposed change order number one of the ARC area development infrastructure improvements project, which will be reconstruct the Mill Street access road. Under finance administration, we have acceptance of the November 2018 financial statements. Under the fire department, we have request permission to issue a commercial burn permit with Davis Jackson to burn cleared debris associated with a construction project with burn to occur at phase nine of Huntington Park west side of the development. Number two is approve interlocal agreement between Otipahaw County, Mississippi and Starkville, Mississippi relating to a joint fire training. Number three is approve memorandum of understanding between the city of Starkville and Otipahaw County to allow both parties to participate in regional FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant to pursue funds for upgrading communications equipment for fire service for each party. Under human resources, we have one request authorization to hire Kenya Bibb as a certified police officer. Number two is request authorization to hire Alex Esters as a driver in the sanitation and environmental services department. Number three is request authorization to hire Joe Dan Baker as a field maintenance worker in the Starkville Parks and Rec Department. Number four is request authorization to hire Garrett Hearn as a part-time athletic assistant in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Number five is request authorization to advertise for a part-time receptionist in the Starkville Park and Recreation Department. Six request authorization to advertise for an airport operations manager in the Starkville Airport Department. Number seven is request authorization to hire Martin Hall and Matthew Surback as firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department and request authorization to retain candidates from the selection process held on December 11th, 2018 for consideration to fill any additional vacant positions in the firefighter classification due to retirements, terminations, or approved additions to the fire department within a period of 90 days. Number eight is request authorization to hire Orathia Robinson, I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson, I know I butchered that, as a maintenance worker three in Starkville Utilities Department. Number nine is request authorization to hire Jacoby Mobley as a maintenance worker in one in the sanitation and environmental services department. And 11 is request authorization to hire Eileen Hill as executive administrative assistant in the Starkville Utilities Department. Under parks, we have number one consideration of approval to advertise a request for proposals for concession services in the parks and recreation department. Under utilities, number L, we have one consideration of dedication and acceptance of warranty deed for reserved lot in Deerfield subdivision for use by Starkville Utilities. Number two is consideration of authorization to award the lowest and best quote from Lee's Precast Concrete Inc. for the phase one of the approved Pleasant Acres manhole material purchase in the amount of $12,985. Number three is consideration of authorization to award the lowest and best quote from T and M Steel to purchase an equipment storage structure in the amount of $44,977. Number four is consideration of authorization to award lowest and best quote from Turner Farms and Trailer Sales to purchase a tilt bed trailer for hauling utility equipment in the amount of $5,860. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Vaughn. All right, next under this we have announcements and comments, and I have one item, and that is introduction of a new employee, Mr. Callahan. And there we go, okay. Nick Callahan is a sports coordinator for Parks and Recreation Department. He is born, he was born in Houston, Mississippi, born and reared, as this says, in Houston, Mississippi. After graduating from Houston High School, Nick attended Mississippi State University where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in sports studies. And you have to tell me what business cognate means. I feel like I'm, what is that?
It's just a focus in business.
Oh, okay.
Business.
Okay, well, thank you. Love to learn something. While at Mississippi State University, Nick worked as a volunteer firefighter with the Woodland Volunteer Fire Department. He also spent three years working in athletic facility management with MSU Athletics and two years in recreational sports with Starkville Parks and Rec. Upon graduating from MSU, Nick worked in golf tournament management for three seasons with Mississippi Golf Association. He's always considered North Mississippi his home and is glad to be back in the city of Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you. We appreciate you being here. Right. Does anyone on the board have anything they wish to talk about or any announcement? Mr. Miller, Alderman?
Mayor, thank you. Just briefly, I wanted to make a recognition and with some sad news. Laverne Stigall, who is the projects coordinator for the Mississippi Municipal League, passed away on Friday after a long battle with cancer over the past few years. And I think the Mississippi Municipal League does fantastic work in educating elected officials throughout the state of Mississippi. And so I'd like for the official record to show just that we recognize Ms. Stigall's contributions and service to the state of Mississippi through her work at the Mississippi Municipal League and that we're thinking about them and certainly praying for them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to come forward and speak directly to the board and tell us your concerns and concerns and issues. This is not an opportunity which we normally engage with people who come forward to us. So just so everyone's aware of that. Mr. Turner.
Good evening to the mayor and board. My name is Havlin Turner Ward 7. All right, to the mayor, to the police chief, and to the NAACP Otipahaw County.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Citizens are kind of worried about some things. One thing is that people with the danger dogs, they don't know the consequences if someone get hurt. We would like some way for them to know that if pit, rock, whatever, hurts someone or kills someone, there's consequences to that. Mayor Kemp and I worked hard to get a danger dog on the path for it to be safe. We don't want it to be tragic. The people that live in Forest Creek, they don't have any street light. They have to turn off 25 and a couple people like to run in ditch because they couldn't see the road. And it's Forest Creek on 25. A little complex, but there's no street lights and if you're not careful, you run off road. Let us try to be mindful of people, our city employees, because it's hard enough, but when they're backs against the wall, it hurts that they beg and beg and beg. They shouldn't have to do that. When they protect us, provide for us, do the best they can, they shouldn't have to beg for help. Also, I have five cousins that probably was involved in my brother's death, and we are watching his better clothes. People, one of them, right across from McKee Park, where that construction, are we having a stone shelf or whatever. But anyway, they just want me to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to come up?
Good evening. My name, my name's Kelly Prather, board. I just want you to know I appreciate all you do for the city of Starkville. Do a lot of great things for our community. There's been a lot of progress made in the last few years, and I greatly appreciate that. I currently live in Country Club Estates, but I'm moving from there. I bought a small property in Carpenter Place subdivision. And since I bought that place, I moved in this weekend, I guess I've been really astounded. I talked to some people over there about the current condition of the roads. And I think if my math is correct, and I know one construction group has built 21 houses there in the last year, the last two years, probably pulled more permits than anybody in town. I'm not sure how many Charlie Morgan has built there, but I would say that Carpenter Place probably has brought more new single-family home and tax dollars in the city of Starkville than any other neighborhood, just from the sheer number of homes that have been built there. Now, I'm not talking about apartments or things like that, single-family homes. That's been a really good development for the city of Starkville. But the streets there right now are just really not acceptable. If you, and I would like to see the board and the mayor, please drive through there, drive through Lee Lane, drive down Irwin Avenue, and drive down Bryson Lane where I just bought a property. And the streets are ridiculous. And I know there's been some discussion about whether it's the Charlie Morgan's responsibility for the streets, but the city's response for holding Charlie accountable to ensure that those were at a certain standard. But they've deteriorated badly. There's potholes, there's mud in the street, and it needs to be corrected. And, you know, I'm moving over next week, and I want to do everything I can to encourage others to come forward too. We need those streets to be addressed. So I hope that the city will take that into consideration for the, my new neighbors are going to be there. And certainly, you know, I know there's been some other issues around some dirt piling up in the back, and city's been real concerned about that. I'd like to see the city be as concerned. Let's do something about the streets in Carpenter Place. And if you hadn't driven through there, I'd encourage you just to drive through there and see. You can't put a pothole and just throw some chat rock in there and hope it sticks, because then it's just spread all over the street. So I thank you for what you do, and I would be appreciative. I'm sure all my neighbors would be over there as well if we would take a look at addressing the issue of those streets over there as soon as possible. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Mayor. I think Alderman Walker's got something. I might, I just have a question.
I was just going to say, could we have the city engineer?
He's aware.
Address that and talk about what the issue is, because I think we all know that we have an issue there.
Are you talking about right now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
Real quickly, just to address Mr. Prather's issue, because there's no question that the roads over there are in terrible shape, but if you could lay out a little bit sort of how we're hamstrung, if there is any, because we've had plenty of conversations over the, over the last several years about how we, how we make some improvements there. Would you mind just relating that?
Right, yeah. This development has been underway for probably the better part of 10 years. Probably back in 2008, 2009 is when they initially opened that and been building on it pretty steadily since. And the city's standard policy with subdivisions, as you all know, just to give some information to the public, is it's the developer's responsibility to own and maintain the streets until the subdivision gets to a point where 85% of the houses of that subdivision have received their certificate of occupancy, which means that the houses are ready to move in. It doesn't mean that they've started construction or done dirt work or poured slabs. It means that the houses are finished. I don't know exactly what the number is on Carpenter Place. There's quite a number of lots over there. But I have been in contact with Mr. Morgan a couple of times really over the last couple of weeks, as recently as today. And Mr. Morgan is aware that there's some, a lot of issues with the roadway. He has communicated to us that he will do his best to continue to maintain those, but has a plan in the very near future to finish the roadways. In other words, he's going to come in, do the base repairs on any, anywhere where there's a large pothole or a base failure, and then do the final overlay. Our plan is to probably get together early next year as the weather accommodates, as it gets warm enough to do the asphalt paving. But Mr. Morgan also indicated that he would be more than willing to provide continued maintenance on all the potholes. He is a little bit limited in the type of material that you can use this time of year, so he's been using a lot of crushed limestone and that type of thing. And he, you know, he is, there's still quite a bit of construction still going on out there. I would say there's probably at least eight or 10 houses under construction right now. So I think his plan is to get past this, I guess, last wave of construction and as the weather warms up in 2019 to try to finish those out, is what, is at least what he's communicated to us. And let me also mention that we are holding a bond on that. And, you know, he is performing his obligation up to this point, and until he gets to 85%, we typically do not intervene in that regard as far as compelling them to finish the overlay until they get through that substantial completion checkpoint.
Thank you for that update. If you could just give us an update at some point right after the new year, just so we can see if we're still on track to make that happen, because there's no question that we need to hold Mr. Morgan accountable in this interim while we're, while we're trying to get the COs done so it becomes a city street.
Sure. And I'll be happy to go out there and do an inventory of how many lots are left, what our percentage is, and I will provide that report personally.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on that?
No.
Okay, all right. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Good evening.
Mayor.
Yes, and your name is?
My name is John Hill. I live at 153 North Drive Drive in the city. My concern is that my grandmother has some property over Yellow Jacket Drive. And if you come from Starkville High School, first house you will see the big blue house there with some scrubbing around it, you know. And I ask the board to give me a lease until the rainy season is over, till we can get in there. And I've already talked to Chief Yarwood about burning it down, getting to my department to burn it down. We can go in there and tear it down. But we can't get in there and do anything now because it's a little too wet. And my thing, Waste Management have all the go boxes all rented out right now. So I ask you to give me a lease till June, and I have it. I will take care of it.
Have you received a letter from the city on this?
No, ma'am. I haven't received a letter from the city. I only got one from Mr. His name?
Mr. Lyles?
Lyles, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that would be?
He gave me 10 days. You know you can't do anything in 10 days.
And, but that would be from the city. That was my question. Yes, sir. Okay, and what's the address exactly?
It's 132 Yellow Jacket Drive.
132.
You come from Starkville High School. First house you will see is a blue house, which a lot of the material around it. And it's too wet to get in there and do anything right now. So I just ask you to give me till March, I mean, June, when it's all dried up and everything, we can get in there and take care of it.
I have that, I have that information. I'll visit Mr. Lyles.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm William Parker. I own Powerstroke Equipment in Starkville. I moved here about 10 years ago and opened up this business, and we've had a chance to grow. And we purchased a piece of property over in an industrial park. And we're having some issues getting a work permit. And one of the issues is the roadway access standards that y'all are planning to, according to this article in the Commercial Dispatch, y'all are planning to adopt the NDOT standards. And right now, we don't have a standard as far as a code is concerned as to how wide you can make a driveway. We work on small engines, but we also work on a lot of farm equipment. We work on a lot of construction equipment. There's a lot more of that growing in Starkville, the people doing construction around town. We typically have people that come in with 18-wheelers, oversized trailers, large trucks, very large turning radiuses. We also work on the fire trucks for the city and for the county. I've employed an engineer. He tells us that it's going to take 20 feet wide to be able to make turns inside my, into my building, in and out. That's what we have on our, our plan. It also says that in this article that y'all, y'all don't have a code, you don't have a policy, and you just merely make suggestions. In my DRC comments, it says we, it says the city of Starkville adheres to the NDOT policy. And I understand that we don't have a policy like that. Not all businesses are the same. I'm not, I'm not somebody out on Highway 12. I'm tucked back in an industrial park. That's where a business like me is supposed to be. What are we supposed to do? What's the remedy if we have a truck that drives off a 16-foot embankment or a 16-foot wide, you know, entrance? If it drives over in the ditch and turns over, who's going to be responsible for that? Am I supposed to be responsible? Because my engineer says it needs to be 20 feet. I say it needs to be 20 feet. There's a lot of issues that go, go along with that. And right now, it looks like since we're trying to adopt the NDOT thing, which says the standard entrance is going to be 16 feet, it appears to me that I'm just being put in a holding pattern right now until this can be adopted. And I don't necessarily think that's fair, but I mean, I would like to know why we hadn't been issued a work permit. We're seasonal business. It's been put in. We've been bumped once when we were on the schedule for a DRC meeting. We've been bumped once already. All my stuff is code compliant, and it was code compliant when we sent it in to start with. We still haven't issued a work permit yet. My business starts picking up in February. We were, we were trying to be moved in between Christmas and New Year's when we shut down. I have equipment that I'm having to cancel orders on. I have stock that I'm having to send back.
Mr. Walker, that's three minutes. Thank you.
I've got to add one comment.
Mr. Wil.
Who could update us on where we're at with the permitting process? What's?
Well, Mr. Kemp. Thank you, sir. You can step back. Appreciate it. If you would, would you?
Yeah, I may need to get Mr. Havlin to help me on this one too, a little bit. As I understand it, we had a DRC meeting about three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago. I can't remember the exact timeline. As I understand it, there was a, and I can give you a full report on all the dates tomorrow.
What do they lack? Do you know offhand what they're lacking?
There was a, there was a, there was a listing of comments from multiple departments, and the last thing I believe, unless Mr. Havlin wants to interject, I believe we're waiting on a revised set of drawings to come back from the applicant.
Mr. Havlin, did you have?
Mr. Parker?
Walker.
Walker, I'm sorry.
If he's going to, if he's going to come up, we need to bring him up, please.
Have you been advised what you needed to supply to the city as far as some renderings or drawings?
To my knowledge, everything's been supplied out to the city from, from my engineers.
That would be Mr. Pritchard. If you would. Any further questions?
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to see what we can do.
I just want to make sure that they're heard so that they come to the mic if there's anything else.
Well, going forward, I mean, if this were to pass tonight, the access plan, that's going, it would be 30 days, correct?
This is a policy. This is not an ordinance. This is a policy.
Policy, okay.
Right, so it would be immediate.
It'd be immediate. Okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify. And as we discuss Friday, they could request a variance if there's a need like this. So it's not carbon stone. If you've got an issue, unusual circumstance such as what we just discussed.
I'm just merely posing a question.
Yes, that's.
Why should I, why do I need to get a variance for something that we don't have a code for?
Well, you don't, at this point, you don't have to, no.
But I, I mean, that's what I'm saying. We're having to go ask for a variance, and we don't have, and we're not doing anything wrong.
We need to know more, the list of comments that are, that are part of the process.
Pending, I don't know what's pending.
And that's the other thing.
This is comments from Mr. Parker about a week and a half ago. As I understand it, we're still waiting on the drawings to be resubmitted, so.
So it's more, it's more than just an access point that's an issue.
And we will be discussing this proposed
Yes.
Policy later.
Mr. Parker.
Well, first of all, and I'm going to try to revise this tonight, because the gentleman, Mr. Parker, first of all, back up even more. Thank you for, for investing in Starkville. I know we've had other businesses that have decided to go, and I know that you've decided to come in and create more jobs, and you're trying to expand your business. And thank you for all you do as a small business owner. Secondly, in section seven, non-residential driveways, I'd like to change that from 16 to a 20. And in this instance, he has a very valid point in the fact that as of today in this second, I feel like the timing on this, you know, first, the first stab is Friday, and then this is version two, this will affect his business. So, you know, what he's trying to do is, I take issue with the word maximum of 16 foot, because if it's a, you know, if it's a maximum of 16, and he's going to invest actively more and put four more feet in there, which is not required, then I think as a business owner, when you do that, you should, you should be allowed. So I'm not so certain this even has to be voted on tonight, but I guess at the end of the day, at least by the end of this week, I'd like to see this gentleman get everything necessary where he can. I know it is seasonal. I know you got a slight downtime in the next couple of weeks, and I know, you know, in February, March, April is fixing to kick up. But I would, I would be, and tonight I would probably vote against it unless it's section seven, non-residential driveways to a maximum of 20 foot. And I think for his instance, this would suffice him, suffice the city. But I do think the timing's kind of odd, because we kind of held the feet of the fire last two months for something that's really not a law or a policy yet. What's that? I'm saying as of, but tonight, what this will do is kind of circumvent this application and hold them to these standards. So. and hold them to these standards, so.
Well, if I may, well, and this is, this is ahead of the discussion about this, there, it's the other things that are pending, it's not only one thing, if it's only one thing, they probably would be able to address it in some kind of way, but since there are other things pending, and as of right now, we don't have an answer to what those are. So if you would get Mr. Pritchard and yourself, it would be nice if you attended as well, so that we'd all be on the same page, to get with Mr. Havlin and Mr. Kemp, then perhaps we can understand everything that needs to be done. Okay? All right.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Well, tomorrow-
That'd be up to these gentlemen, accessibility, so.
Thank you.
Uh huh, you bet.
Mayor Boyd, my name is John Tolliver, 26 Charcuta Road.
Mr. Tolliver?
104 days ago, sewers backed up into our home. We're, we're still not getting any response beyond, well, the insurance people stopped at $10,000. It would take more than $30,000 to get our home back livable, because we had two bathrooms where the problem started, in the two bathrooms, which the bathrooms are the most expensive parts of the house, and then having a load-bearing wall, you're going to have that situation as well. So we have a lot of work to do within that place. $30,000 is not enough, and he stopped at 10. My, my daughters have been asked, what do you want for Christmas? They didn't say a computer, they didn't say a phone, they said they want to go home. They want to go home. I am ready to go home. I am ready. Please, you all can do something. If you can't, you know someone who can. Thank you so much, I hope you have a very merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver. Anyone else for citizens' comments?
Good evening, Boyd. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Fellow Board members? You know, no one never mentioned the alternatives, but you too, Chris.
Thank you.
Tonight is the last night I will be speaking to this board at the President of our Tipperary County NAACP. Yolanda Haddix will be taking over as of January the 7th, in Shear Cerrone. But over the last six years, we have all seen ups and downs. You know, we don't all agree, families don't all agree. So, you know, when you, Board members, department heads and everybody else disagree with someone, come on, work it out, but don't hold grudges. You know, we've got a new year coming. May God bless each and every one of you, and all department heads, so this city run, so that we can look good among all the cities in the United States. Police chief, great job. Fire department, great job. Who else I got here? Park department? That's it?
Sanitation.
Oh, yeah, oh, Gavin, please don't shoot. Oh, and all department heads, I mean, all of them. I thank you for all the support, but when I speak again before this board, it'd be as a citizen, so I can say what I want to, because I'm limbing it at the chair, because whatever I say, people say, you're speaking for the NAACP. That's why when I was speaking, I say, I'm speaking as Chris Taylor, I'm speaking as the President, but as of the new year, it won't be. Thank you, and may God bless all of you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Taylor. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? All right, ma'am?
Do I give my 30 minutes?
If you want three minutes and then your 10 minutes?
Yeah. I want that.
Well, then, come right on up.
All right.
I'm just going to time, I'm going to time you for 13 minutes about that.
As I come forward, I'd like to say, thank you all for everything that you did for me when I was going through with my daddy's death, and I thank you for your prayers and all your concern. And I'm coming for, coming, you know, I got to have some coming, so. I didn't come last week, done it the last week when y'all met, we called us up, you know what was happening. We were again was having a gay parade. If they would call us up, we else probably would be fat. I don't know what it means, you know, if you get called out, I think I'm a straight lady, so I don't know. But I would just like to say, these words, you use too much of my city money for any kind of services. Now, I can't get services like that, but you use too much of my money. On Saturdays, if they was going to have a parade, it's bad, but charge them some other money. Our garbage collectors don't work collecting my trash on Saturdays. So I would just like to say, think about this from now on, and while you're having meetings, think about what you're doing, you're cutting us off as citizens. I know you don't want to be up here all night, but just don't take nothing and put it on there for all night situation. You don't want to be all night, but prepare yourself, because bigger things coming in the new year. And then again, I would just like to say, I want to know, all the services has been limited, all the services has been limited. I'm still looking for farm over on Roland Hill. I understand the mayor, I understand everybody else coming over the brack through, but I haven't gotten anything. We haven't gotten anything. Well, the business may come, they may come if you do this, if you do this to them. We got a lot of land over there that we could develop and make into a grocery store, we could make into anything we wanted to be, and we got West Side Park. West Side Park, those children can't get over into the park, they can't go over across town. The buses don't stop and take them all over there and bring them back. You got a little sister, you want your little sister to go to the park sometime with you too. That's how my mom used to send her. We got to think about these things. We got these services, but they're not doing us any good where we live. They're not doing us any good over down Roland Hill. Still, I have to go, if I want to catch a bus, I still have to go to the hospital. I want a child to come and assist me one day and roll me up down Roland Hill to catch that bus. Me and I catch that bus, try to come back home and get some ice cream. I guarantee you, when I get back, it'll be ice, you know that, just a minute. I'm looking for some results coming up in the next year. Mississippi State got enough. Mississippi State got anything they want to get, and more, and they do do for the community, and I thank God, they have that, they do do for that. We need some low houses, low income houses for people to live in. Everywhere I look, there's apartments look like New York City. We don't, I don't want to look like New York City for a child to go out and play and can't get out to go out and play because it look like everything falling on them. Please, y'all consider this. Look at me, look at me, just look at me, I'm coming up here to ask you these things. You know, and I'm tired of not getting a result, you know, for it. Y'all hire an attorney, now he's good, so by the time, I mean, I've been talking to people, and they say he's kind, but bring it to the public and let them do some. Brian didn't say it's mine, I don't know it, but I'll try to go along with it, because I don't end up in court, I end up going up there trying to help somebody. Downtown, come and take me downtown in my chair. I want to, I personally invite y'all, come and take me downtown. Meet me right here, but you got to give me down to all the quarters down there, you know, in order to go downtown. Bonk, reek, roar, I can't do it. I can't. I need to go shopping too, but I couldn't go no person shopping here. That's because I, I couldn't get around, I couldn't get around. So think about that sometimes, come and get me, take me, I don't mind going with, come and get me, and take me, and let's see if we can go make it a better area. We said we want Starkville to be the number one, and it was number, number something in the book, I remember, that's how we called, that's the city. I recall it was something, number one, number something, but I'm just saying, people come on now. We got a city to run, start with. Mississippi State fan, I still owe them some money from when I went to school, I remember when they were here, but I still owe them money from when I went to school, and I love Mississippi State, but I also owe John Tolliver, his children, they need some, they need some help, we need to help them, find some way to help them. But I'm telling you, check all the schools, check, don't just say, because they invited me up here and they rolled me this and that. We got ditches over there, I guarantee you, if you come, I'll take you down to the ditches, and I bet you when you get to smelling, you'll say, oh my Lord, what, what we do, we need some, we need some, we do. Election coming, and we got to start thinking about how the poll is going to be. We can't put every white named hood and every black named hood right here, we got to put them together so we can get. I remember, next time I look up there, I'm going to see some black. They got a job down there, them too got a job, regardless of what people say, they got a job to do, because every time they vote is two, two, everybody else. Come on now, let's get it together. This year, I'm going to be back, and if you can't do nothing, just say I can't do it, and just don't resign, we'll get somebody else. We will, we'll look for somebody else. I just want you to know, if you can't make up your own mind about what you're doing, don't try to meet the stick when you do it. I love y'all, and I, I said I'm a fool, you know, I'm a fool at every time. Thank everybody, I would like to thank everybody, the officers, I like police, I like them playing the new face sometimes, and I would like to thank all y'all, but I, I really want to say, this is a new year coming, come on, look at your hiring at Starkville Park and Recreation. I know they got fire because they need this and that, but look at your hiring, is it appropriately, do we have a flag that I'm glad, or did we not sit out to do some? Come on, look at it, look at it the right way. Y'all can talk about them, you can do what you want to do, but I'm telling you, this is a new year, God's eyes, if God give us strength, and if I don't, and be gone, I'm still not going to go over there and saying, come on now, come on, Starkville, I tell you. Love y'all, Happy New Year, and I'm glad Chris gone, number one, ooh gee. Now, now, I love Chris, I'm glad, I'm glad Chris was around to do what he can do, but thank y'all, thank y'all all, and I'd like to say, you see this room tonight, it's packed with genuine people, and it's packed with the faith folks who just want to come up here and make up little stupid, so we start dealing, I'm going to start being up next, thank y'all very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Ayer, and you've got another seven minutes, are you all done?
Oh, I'm, 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 like I said, I'm asking God to bless on more and more and I'm getting the help now. I don't know why, but I want to see some stuff done for handicapped people. Let's have some railers put up. Let's have some door owners to where I can get in and won't have to ask, you know, your body for something. Cause these are things that's supposed to be supported to our city. And I thank God, fool. You know, I, I, I can't help how I'm like this, but I want to get some things started now. And when I be starting seeing somebody might, you know, say, well, this right here, I'll be sitting out there in my wheelchair, yeah, we should do need a door owner. And I'll sit there all day, I'll come get that time and make it better. Please, please, y'all do a good job for the folks on these committees. Uh, you know, I like that, but let's open up more and let's go down West Side. Let's do some fun West Side. But they need a place down there where they can play. They have West Side Park, but they need that little, that little building that we got down in there. We can put Grandma and Granddad down there and let them have us look, be fun down there. We could do that. But please, fix the ditch, fix the roads, do everything you can do. Rolling hills is my game and I don't intend to move until God come to move. I thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Addy. All right. Next item up for under board business is consideration transition to fuel acquisition to Fleet Corps Technologies Operating Company for the ensuing 2019 year. Mr. Forrester, would you like to come up? Mr. Forrester was kind enough to make a presentation to us for the work session on Friday, which we appreciate. And so I just wanted you to be available if there were questions from board members who might not have been present or who might have some additional questions associated with it. So any board members who think, Mr. Miller, see you reaching for the mic?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in six, six, I wasn't there on Friday, so just sixty second snapshot. I did read the, uh, what you included or what utilities included in the packet, but just sixty second snapshot, why do we need to do this?
Okay, um, at a very high executive summary level, uh, essentially currently we are managing our own fuel system, purchasing, keeping up the tanks. There's some pretty large capital invested into that each year. Um, and, uh, there are three options essentially. The mayor, and she's correcting this, option one is not really an option. That option is to not do anything, but that's not an option because we don't want to do that necessarily. Uh, option two would be to spend some capital money in investing in our fuel tanks, um, from a reporting standpoint and then from a tracking and transparency standpoint. And then option three would be to utilize an outside vendor such as Fuel Man or some other type of government fleet card. Um, the, uh...
It would be under state contract or some other arrangement. And part of the, part of the reason, allow me to interrupt him just a moment. Part of the reason is because we have had some issues in running out of fuel. We've had some issues with accountability and we've had some issues with, uh, the, the, what am I trying, not statistics, but the reporting structure of fuel because it's sort of one of those things that we did on our own. So it's not a structure that has lent itself to use between the city clerk and the utilities department, so.
In terms of crossing hands, essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
And Alderman, the high, the high level goal here is to get to where we're kind of up to industry standard with what the public expects and so on and so forth.
Okay. Very well. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Carver, I saw you in the old Sistrunk.
No, I was just saying, have we had any accountability issues? Have we, have there been issues in the past with fuel, employees stealing fuel? Have we had anything that's driving this or is it just cost effective standpoint or...
Well, it's actually all of that, but it, but let me answer it in part because one of the issues that we had is on a couple of different weekends that I can think of, probably more than that, we have had issues where there wasn't fuel available because the accountability of the tanks and measuring them and that sort of thing. So that creates an issue. We then have to go purchase elsewhere, which is in essence what we're doing. This allows us to have more than one location from which to purchase, uh, the Fuel Man element does, uh, because there are about thirty places around town that we could do this. Um, it allows for an accountability in the sense of we know exactly who's buying what in what vehicle and how often. And so there isn't a real factor in understanding what we're doing and being able to access that easily. It crosses over to, uh, the city clerk's office and what they can determine and how we're tracking that fuel usage. So there's, there's a lot of, there are a lot of pieces that go with this that allow us to see what we can do. There's also a potential cost savings in the sense that, um, I think the amount that, recently we had someone who went to Oxford for a school and, uh, we just found out today that he spent, I think, a dollar fifty-two on gas as opposed to two nineteen or something, two twenty-five that we most recently paid for. So there's anticipated some fuel cost savings associated with it as well. So that's sort of what's driving is some of these things have just kind of come together to go, okay, well, it's time for us to do something proactive. Um, our tanks are quite old and obviously need some, uh, measurement and some, I mean, every three years they're, they're assessed by MDEQ, is that right?
That's correct.
And so, you know, and they're very old, so I think at some point in time we're gonna have to acknowledge that, uh, that age is gonna create a problem in the future for us. Hopefully, right now, we don't have any kind of brownfield issues associated with, with old gas tanks, but we'd like to not ever go there. So if there's a way to prevent us from, uh, from being in that, then that would be helpful as well, so.
I wanted to say, I mean, it all sounds good. What's, uh, what's the cost estimate? I mean, is it, is it a guaranteed break even or what's the negative? I mean, for fuel savings, I mean, if we could use Fuel Man, understand the concept and all that, I'm just saying.
Sure. So, um, if we were to go with some kind of an outside vendor, what we would end up with, ideally, if, if over the course of the next year, the board evaluated it and decided that an outside vendor, um, whether it be Fuel Man or some other private vendor was, uh, was a good solution for the city, then ultimately we would end up avoiding a large capital investment and ongoing, uh, maintenance cost, um, for the foreseeable future to keep our tanks up, uh, bring an antiquated system up to, uh, industry standard and then, um, of course, maintain it going forward and have all those inspections that we, uh, have to pay for and maintain, uh, those tanks in that manner.
So this Fleet Corps, that, that's not Fuel Man?
It is.
It is. Fleet Corps does business as Fuel Man in the state of Mississippi.
Is it always a discounted rate on fuel costs?
It's state contract rate.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Sistrunk?
I, I, I would like to make a motion, but I would, I would like to say that I appreciate the work that, um, Mr. Forrester did. We do have a very aging system and we're at that point where we'll have to make an investment if we, um, don't look outside. This is a, um, low hanging fruit, an easy way to dip our toe in the external provider market. Uh, we will monitor it. As a matter of fact, I'd like, wanna make our motion to include that Ms. Harden report back to us. But, but the things that we have, the pumps, the tanks, the reporting capability, um, are, are aged and, and not particularly sophisticated or helpful always in trying to, uh, make sure that we get things, uh, accounted for properly. So I would like to make a motion that we transition to, um, fuel acquisition through Fleet Corps Technology for 2019 and that, um, we monitor and evaluate that at the end of the year. In the interim, I would like for Ms. Harden to present us a report in three months.
Quarterly report?
Quarterly report, um, to, to give us some indication of how, how it's working for the city.
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Miller. Further discussion? Alderman Walker?
Um, I'm supportive of, of this move as well, but the question I have is during this interim process, um, uh, since we are going to be monitoring for the, for this year, what does that mean for us in terms of our existing system? Presumably, we aren't going to be buying fuel to, to, uh, to replenish our tank, but are we going to be contacting MDEQ to see what that process looks like if, if it turns out that we are looking to essentially abandon, uh, that? I'd like to know, I think that's an important discussion because if it turns out after a year, it makes more sense for us to reinvest in our own system. I would hate to completely abandon and not have that, that, those ships and ducks in a row, if you will. Um, so I would like to see a plan for what does that transition look like, uh, or at least for y'all to be able to, to tell us what that is and what that plan might be and how MDEQ gets back involved so we know exactly where we are in terms of brownfield, no brownfield, what that, what that looks like.
Yes, sir. And that's a great question. Um, what we kind of discussed internally and among the team that put the report together was for, at least for the net course of the next year, we would leave our tanks intact, make sure that, um, that, uh, the yearly, uh, check on them is paid for and taken care of so that we know that they're still, um, for all practical purposes approved to be used. And then, uh, at the end of that year, we would reevaluate, the board would then make a decision on whether or not they wanted to stick with a Fuel Man, solicit for some type of, um, other, other vendor to provide that or reinvest in, uh, the fuel tanks, in our city fuel tanks at that time. Uh, but as, as far as right now, it would, it would be a recommendation that, um, for the next twelve month period, we keep our fuel tanks. We certainly won't be purchasing fuel in them on the level that we are currently, uh, but we do keep them and we keep them conditioned so that we can utilize them in case we need to. And then as a, as a further note, if, if at any point we arrive at a final decision on which way we want to go, uh, certainly something needs to be considered about the emergency aspect of that. And we probably need to consider having a contract in place with a local or state provider in order to, um, have emergency fuel during a, uh, during a major disaster.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. I have a motion and a second. If those all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Forrester. All right. Next item is under planning and this will be, uh, consideration of appeal of the denial of a variance request, uh, variance eighteen dash twelve by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for Relief from front and rear yard setback requirements proposed duplexes at three fourteen Louisville Street and three hundred Scale Street in an R2 zone. Mr. Havlin, you gonna present a brief, um, summary of this?
The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the reduction in the front, front yard and rear yard setbacks to propose duplex development to be constructed on two properties on Louisville Street, Scale Street. The two lots are being proposed to be so divided into five lots. Uh, this request is part of a conditional use request to place five duplexes on five proposed lots in an R2 zone. A preliminary plat for the property has not been submitted at this time. The Planning and Zoning Commission tabled the conditional use request for duplexes at the November thirteenth, twenty eighteen, and the December eleventh, twenty eighteen meeting pending the outcome of the variance request. A conditional use request is dependent upon the site plan. With the site plan showing the setbacks reduced, Planning and Zoning Commission decided to table the application until the variance, uh, is approved. On November twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals denied the variance request for the setback requirements. On December fourth, the applicant emailed a signed letter appealing the decision to the Board of Alderman. The variance request is to reduce the front setbacks from twenty-five feet to ten feet for all proposed lots. As you can see here, there are five total lots, kind of conceptually laid out. Uh, the front setbacks were along this frontage, Scale Street, and then along Ward. And then also in Lot Five, which is the one on the corner, to, uh, also have the rear setback reduced from thirty-five feet to fifteen feet. The applicant attended a Development Review Committee meeting on November twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. City staff requested that there be no access drives on Louisville Street in order to prevent traffic backing up at the intersection and that the Scale Street entrance be primarily right in only to alleviate traffic backing up on Scale Street in the westerly direction. City staff also requested that the parking for any proposed duplex be placed in the rear of the structure. This is consistent with the subject property's place type of traditional neighborhood existing, uh, found in a twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, uh, which you can see here in the development form, uh, parking to be in the side or the rear. As of this date, the planning office has received one in-person visit against a request, two letters against a request, and one letter, one of the letters was from the Central, Starkville Central Neighborhood, uh, Foundation, which was included in your packet. And then we received a second letter by email on December seventeenth, twenty eighteen from George Dunn, which Emily is passing her own now. The four conditions that must be met for approval of a variance by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals are shown on this slide. The Board of Adjustments and Appeals voted four to one to deny the request with one board member recusing himself from the discussion and the vote.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the Board of Mr. Havlin at this point? Okay. Seeing none. Is the applicant here?
And Mayor, may I be recognized before the applicant comes forward?
You may. Mr. Havlin?
Board, I just wanted to echo the comments of Mr. Havlin and, and say that there are multiple planning issues going on with this piece of property, but the one before the board right now is the setback issue, separate and distinct procedurally from the conditional use. And so the criteria that you base your decision on tonight is that four-part criteria that's on the big board right now. The questions of, do special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to this land, structure or building involved, and the same conditions are not applicable to other land structures and buildings in the same district? Will the literal interpretation of the ordinance deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district? Are the special conditions and circumstances not the result of the actions of the applicant? And will this not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings? That's the criteria that you're gonna rack your decision by tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Havlin. Does that raise any questions with the board? Okay. All right. The applicant, uh, you have an opportunity to make your case?
Yes. Uh, just to speak on these requirements, we had no intention of asking for a setback variance until city staff put the condition of no connection to Louisville Street, limited connection to Scale Street, and limited connection to Ward Street. So forcing the parking in the rear is what caused the ask for this variance on the property. Uh, as the city attorney said, we, we feel that's the hardship. The hardship was placed by DRC. We were not asking for front setbacks until the DRC needed for the parking in the rear. One thing that's been confused and I just want to make clear, we're not asking for a lot size variance on this. We're ten percent to fifteen percent bigger than the lots required in an R2 zone. And, uh, just repeat one more time, then I'll, I'll answer any questions. The conditions were put on this property by city staff, not by the developer. I'm free to answer any questions, you may.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of the applicant at this point? Questions?
So staff asked you to put parking in the rear?
Correct.
Which is requiring changing the sets.
Setback, correct.
Where did y'all plan to put the parking beginning at?
In the front, but we were denied driveway access to the roads.
Mr. Havlin, would you like to explain a little bit about what your thought process was associated with that?
Yeah, with the existing neighborhood, I mean, with that place type of, uh, traditional neighborhood existing, uh, as it showed on the place type description, is that the parking is on the rear and the side, which is pretty consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And then with this being duplexes and not single family, it's creating more of a parking lot rather than a driveway situation. And so having the parking in the rear would kind of reduce that visual impact on the neighborhood and, uh, make it a little more similar to what's the adjacent properties have.
That help?
I just, again, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on that. I understand that, that the place type and why we would want the parking to be to the rear or the side. Um, for the existing structure that was on the corner of Louisville, the, the existing drive was off of Scale, is that correct?
Correct. It's a curb cut, right?
They had, they had an existing curb cut?
They had a curb cut right there.
Carb on, on Louisville and Scale. See the little cutout there? It's, it's right in there.
So there was one existing curb cut on Louisville Street?
Correct.
And then there was two on Scales, one for each lot?
Uh, no, just one on Scales and one off of Ward for the house that was there.
Anything further?
No.
Any other questions from anyone? Okay. Mr. Pepper, is that, is that it?
No.
All right. Uh, anyone who wishes to, um, discuss the situation, or the situation, the, uh, the application here, the appeal of the denial? Now would be an opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. My name is Joe Fertizzi. I live at five eleven Greensboro Street. That's Ward One and Alderman Carver's Ward. Uh, I'm here to speak, not just on behalf of myself, but other members of our central neighborhood that live in this area to speak against this opposition. I guess I want to start off by being clear. We've tried to be clear, we've spoken to y'all, uh, at a meeting maybe a month or so ago, at the Planning and Zoning on multiple occasions, at the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, that, that we're not against development in our neighborhood, we're not against this per, development of this particular site. We just think it's important that any new development, especially that in the traditional neighborhood and our historic neighborhood, fit in with the fabric and character of the neighborhood. And, uh, unfortunately, we feel that based off the proposed site plan and the variances being requested, they would result in a development pattern that's kind of out of style for what we have in our neighborhood. Uh, that's a big concern of ours. We're also concerned with just the precedent that it'll set by granting a variance for this setback here on this site and how that'll impact other properties within this area and their ability to impact the same variance or request the same variance. Um, and I'll keep it short because I know we've talked before and you've been here for a long time, but the third point that I want to make out, and this is for me personally, kind of addresses what we started talking about, is the idea of a hardship. We outlined pretty clearly the criteria that's required and, and I, I personally don't feel that there's anything going on on this site that would not preclude it from being developed under the current code. As, as it is by right right now, you could develop on this site without having to ask for variances to do these. So we respectfully request that you uphold the Board of Adjustment and Appeals decisions. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fertizzi. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. My name is Jeremy Murdock. I'm at five oh two Greensboro, also in Ward One, uh, in this adjacent neighborhood. And I've been following this, like Mr. Fertizzi said, throughout this whole process, starting back in August with the original rezoning request and, um, multiple planning and zoning meetings and Board of Adjustments and Appeals, following this whole process. But we feel like this is a very important project for our neighborhood. This is a property that's pretty much on the edge of the Greensboro Street Historic District, the Overstreet Historic District, both of which are very valuable, um, properties and, and neighborhoods in the community. We've seen a recent respark of activity in the Overstreet District with three new single family homes being built on Gillespie Street or nearby this year, multiple homes being renovated in the area. So we're seeing a revitalization in the Overstreet District. Obviously, Greensboro Street is a little more established, we want to protect that. Uh, I feel strongly that this proposed site plan would be out of character with the existing neighborhood. Um, I've outlined a lot of my concerns to planning and zoning because they were dealing with all the details of this, with lot sizes, uh, number of lots, number of buildings, things like that, location of the parking lot, as was mentioned. Obviously, as Mr. Lavender said, y'all are just dealing with the variance requests and setbacks tonight, so I'll just focus on that. Infill development is different than greenfield development, new development out on undeveloped property, new subdivision going in. Developers can create the character they want, character of houses, things like that. Infill development's very different when you're in the middle of an existing neighborhood. Um, it's gotta try to mimic the fabric of the existing neighborhood. I feel like the best way to do that is just look around and copy what's there. Look at the form and scale of the buildings, look at the setbacks, lot sizes, and try to mimic as best we can what's around it because it does impact everything that's around it when it's an infill development property. So I looked at the setbacks of most homes along Gillespie Street, Scale Street, and Louisville Street, and the average is around thirty-five foot setback. The two homes that were on this site before it was demolished, one was about thirty-five feet, one was around fifty feet. Uh, so to go to ten feet, uh, is a really extreme difference. Uh, I think that'd be an extreme difference for one building, much less five, two or three-story duplex buildings. That's a big change for that site and a big difference from the surrounding, um, neighborhood. Talking about the parking in the back, in the rear with the place type and things like that, that's the reason because when you look around our neighborhood, you don't see large thirty space parking lots in our neighborhood. The few large lots we do have that were done probably in the seventies and eighties, I don't let you look at that now and see that as a good decision. So we're trying to change some of the mistakes that were made in the past. The curb cuts and things like that that are existing, those were for two single family homes. A lot of those were rental houses. They may have six, eight cars, not thirty cars trying to access those existing curb cuts. So it's a very different proposal that we have here. Um, and I realize that variances are in our codes for a reason, uh, to allow for if there is some unique feature on the property that's preventing development. Uh, the way I see it, in my opinion, the, the big challenge here with this proposed site plan is that we're trying to fit way too much on that site. A site that historically, over a hundred years, had one or two homes on it. Now we're trying to do five duplex buildings. That's a big shift. I think we're just trying to squeeze too much on that site. So I do ask that you, uh, uphold the decision of adjustments and appeals and deny this branch request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Anyone else? Anyone else? The applicant like to say anything further?
I don't know if Mr. Havlin can show, but if you look at the corner, I, I don't know what everyone's defining as a neighborhood, but if you look around the corner on Ward Street, those homes are not setback thirty-five feet. If you look at the corner of Scales, McKee, they're not setback. There are many, many homes in this area that are not setback what R2 currently calls for. The density of this, we're touching a piece of property to the northwest that's more dense than what we intend to build. Ward Street is way more dense than we intend to build. So whatever you're considering neighborhood, think about the whole neighborhood, not just cherry pick one street, please.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Mr. Lavender?
Mr. Pepper, uh, Mr. Havlin, can you pull up the diagram?
Which one?
The, uh, yeah, the side diagram. I want to make sure I understand something. If, if you didn't get the variance setbacks tonight, if you had to operate under the twenty-five didn't get the variance setbacks tonight, if you had to operate under the 25-foot setbacks, could you put the proposed five duplexes on this lot?
Yes.
And that's something that you all would want to do with the 25-foot setbacks?
Yes.
So that's not a criteria as far as density. That's only parking issue?
It's the own-
From your position?
Speaking just of this variance, yes. It's a parking issue that has pushed the buildings forward on the property.
Okay.
Anything further? Anyone, any questions from the board members? Okay. Nothing further?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Discussion. Motion? Is there a motion from anyone?
Mayor, I think, just, may I refer?
Yes, you may. Mr. Walker?
I think from a discussion standpoint, I think obviously this is a very visible corner, corner lot at a very busy and probably undersized intersection of Lewisville and Scales Street. So I can appreciate at DRC the request of no access off of Lewisville and limited access off of Scales. I think intuitively, I think that that makes sense. I wonder if it would be worth, at some point, if this project does move forward to take another look at presumably maybe leaving that one additional access off of Lewisville if it is where the existing street is. I know we're going to be talking about access management a little bit later on, but there was an existing drive there. And I would say you have, the closer you get to the intersection, you have some topographic concerns. So again, I understand why we made the decision of no access off of Lewisville Street. Looking at this diagram, I do agree that it is changing the character of the neighborhood, not only in terms of the, what the variance, the setback would allow, but the scale and the scope of what the parking would indicate is definitely something that is distinct in whatever this neighborhood would be. And I think that's a bit of an issue. For me, it's a bit of an issue in terms of what that precedent would set. I don't know that I would be able to support this conditional use, whether the parking's on the side or the rear, based on what I'm looking at here. But as the city attorney mentioned, what is before us tonight is the request of this variance request. And I would say, looking around, while they may not all be 35 feet, they're certainly not all 10. And I think it would be in the best interest that if we uphold the Board of Adjustments Appeals decision to deny this variance request. So, Mayor, I'd make a motion to deny the variance request.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Walker to deny the variance request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. Any further discussion?
May I have your attention?
Mr. Lattimer.
Alderman Lattimer. No, no, sir. No, ma'am. Alderman Walker, is your motion based on a finding that the request does not meet the five criteria, the four criteria listed in the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. That is a denial of the variance request by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. All right. Next item is the access management policy, which is under engineering. So, I'll start with this one, just in the sense that I kind of caused it to come forward. And one of the reasons was because when I was in attendance at DRC meetings, we did have discussion about not having standards. Give me just a second, may I, one? Get out. In the DRC meetings, we did have discussions about not having standards by which we could tell people exactly what it was they needed in terms of their project, the ability to get in and out of their particular lots or projects. And someone would ask for this and someone would ask for something else, and we didn't have anything upon which to rest that made sense. So we've got areas around town that have, you know, 100-foot wide, or that's probably an exaggeration, 50 or 75-foot wide, all concrete entries, which are somewhat dangerous for pedestrians who are trying to walk, and we're obviously encouraging that. And then we have some that are narrower and have that access, and we have used MDOT standards, obviously, in areas where MDOT exists. We follow, we've used their standards because that's their requirement. But we also have them on Lewisville Street, which was not an MDOT road at the time. We redid Lewisville Street. And so I think it's worked out. And I wanted us to have something we could fall back on. And the question about the variance was that you could, you know, if it doesn't suit your purposes, for whatever it is, you could come forward and ask for a variance. So that's kind of the reason that this was come forward, is to see if we couldn't land somewhere before we get to our unified development code at which we can address this in a holistic way, so that we'll have something that we can rely on moving forward between now and the adoption of the development code. So that was kind of the goal. It was not to put Edward in a hard place here, or Mr. Kemp give him a hard time about it, but to give him something from which he could say, you know, this is where we are and this is why.
I'd like to support this tonight and move forward with the resolution as written and amend it to include any permits that have already been submitted to be grandfathered in under our current standards. Chris can help, or is he, he left?
He left. I called him an alderman and it scared him away.
Anything that's currently in the design?
Currently pending.
In the mix?
Yes, to be grandfathered in, to assist Mr. Walker who-
Okay. Well, and that will mean, you know, it's kind of like-
Anyone else who might be.
Second.
To avoid the variance process.
I understand.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and I have a second. Further discussion or questions of Mr. Kemp about the, what this might entail or what this might mean. Okay, Alderman?
Again, I think this is a good step going in the right direction to give us, to give you something to stand behind of some, approved, agreed upon standard, so you have some helping decision-making process. The question I have, not to get into the specifics of the gentleman's specific project, but how I read the, what I'm reading in the policy, I want to make sure I understand it. The 16-foot minimum is if you have a one-way drive. So if you have a, two cars presumably coming out of your drive, it can be, what's the standard? 30? What was the width?
35.
I think it was 35.
35. And so what do we, how, what are we using to determine one-way? I would presume that if you're talking more like a one-way street as opposed to a driveway entrance, how does, how would this document be interpreted from that perspective?
And does it actually affect Mr. Parker?
I'm not worried. I mean, I want to know what this means for anyone.
So, I'm not trying to be evasive, but let me just say, every site is different. Every business type is different. How they function is different. And we have to, we have to understand that. And obviously, we are, we are wanting the development to occur. We support Mr. Um-
Walker.
Yes, Parker.
Parker.
We support Mr. Parker and his business and his expansion. The thing that's unique about Mr. Parker's business is that it's an existing building, and so the way that it's situated is it's not very far off of the road. And so it just works from a configuration standpoint to have a, kind of a circular flow, both in the front of his building and then around the back for more service-type activity. I would say that a lot of times that conversation happens with the developer as it comes in, you know, how, what works best kind of from your development pattern. The other one that we've recently done with two one-ways is the new car wash on Highway 12. It just worked better for their site because they were a little bit constrained from a width standpoint. It was difficult for them to get in and maneuver around through the circulation of their site and then come back out at the same location. So I guess there's some design flexibility on that, depending on the actual site constraints, the site usage, the site, type of transportation that's needed, both getting to the site and around and through the site. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I guess we would leave it up to the developer and their designer a little bit for some flexibility on whether they would prefer to have a one-way in and then a one-way out, or like a unified, multiple lane entrance/exit.
Or if you, oh, and again, I just want to make sure that, I think you are answering the question, but if you have two entrances and let's say your drive, your drive, your parking isn't one-way angled parking, so in that case, you're, both of your entrances could theoretically be two-way entrances.
Correct.
I mean, is that, and that would be determined site by site?
Yes.
Then the engineering drawings would show those as two-way traffic circulation, and then you would not be held to the 16-foot standard.
Right. And that's, that's the 16-foot, I think, is the, is the design parameter that MDOT recommends in their manual, because if you get much wider than that, then it does encourage a two-lane, two-way traffic.
Right. And I'm with it. I think if something's going to be one-way, that's, I would even argue 15 feet would be the way to go, if it's one-way. But if it's two-way, that gives you the flexibility. I think that then for this particular site and other sites, you have, obviously, you're looking at the size of the lot to deal with some of the other distances that is pointed out in here, 125 feet. Am I remembering that number right? Between curb cuts?
Yes.
200 feet.
And so again, for a situation like this, and I believe as the motion is talked about, may allow some more flexibility there to discuss that. So I'm okay with that. One question that I understand, I think the 125-feet distance from, let's talk about street alignment. And here, the document talks about having street alignment, wanting to be directly across from one another like a four-way stop, which is clearly the ideal scenario. And if that can't happen, we're looking for that to be 125 feet further away. And then from that entrance to another entrance would be 200 feet, correct? Okay. There's language that talks about in here, if we're going to be recommending a right-in or right-only-out. Does that change, does that change the distance between how you're looking at that street alignment if you're not coming right across?
Yeah, it would not be critical at all, assuming that the right-in, right-out functions as a right-in, right-out.
So that's something that's designed in the DRC that would be discussed at that point?
Absolutely.
So, so does, does the way this is currently drafted right now give you enough in writing where it is clear that that determination is going to be made by staff, or should something be in here to further exacerbate that? Or am I, does that make, am I being clear?
I think it gives us enough guidance. And I understand, I'm not going into this with an incredibly rigid, you know, approach, understanding that I think the 125 is going to be probably the most challenging aspect to meet, because a lot of times, your site is constrained by certain width. And there's only so many places that you can put on that to make your business operate, function. And, you know, you also have to have the offset from the property line. And a lot of times, everywhere around you is already developed. So you're kind of constrained in that regard, too. So I would say, in a perfect scenario, yes, you would check all of these boxes. But we also have to have enough flexibility to understand and to, I guess, look at it site by site, and on the, on the things that are reasonable, let's try to achieve those. On the things that are unreasonable, let's do the best we can.
And so I'm just going to, may I refer? So again, just to, in that light, as this is drafted right now, if it were approved, if somebody doesn't meet the 125 and they need to go seek a variance, now we're requiring them to go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Is, could we have language in here or something where we say, we're going to up to, say, 5%, 10% or something like that? So what is, your math, people, I don't do public math, but one, you know, if we were to say, we're going to say, you know, 10% of 125, so now you're in the 105 or 18, you know, does that give enough flexibility? So if it's close, you're there, but without forcing everybody, if you don't meet the standard, to go to adjustments and appeal? Or does that, is that the kind of flexibility that you would want, or that you're not comfortable?
I think however the board wants to do it, I would, I would take the approach of the board's okay with this, is understanding that your staff is going to do the best job that they can do on trying to encourage development and do it in a way that, that follows the code. And so I would say that the only reason for a project to go to an appeal is if there is a viable, reasonable way to do a project and provide access, and the applicant just chooses not to do it for whatever reason. And then I think that they take that into the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and make their case. But if it's, if it's something that is already constrained by their function, by the existing properties around them, by their lot size, I would, I would love the flexibility for staff to be able to provide the flexibility and the accommodation to do that kind of through the DRC process.
Alderman Carr?
No, I'm just, in another way, that's exactly what I was thinking. By function, so if it's a business that predominantly picks for a trailer and versus a car wash or something, I mean, I understand that, but I'm okay with the contingency idea, what you're saying. I don't think it's time yet, but I'm going to personally be watching this. I'd like to have any updates. I never want to, I never want to have a perception of being a community of discouraging business. And so that's something I, I would ask personally, that you call me and any board member, if it's an instance like this, again, that, you know, before they go through the variance process, there's something we can look at. But I personally got out and measured the 16-foot, I, you know, I think once you divide 35 for two lanes, that was going to be my only last question, is really getting to those feet. 35 divided by two is 17 and a half feet. Doesn't sound like much, but it is. But so you're saying when you get up, upward of 20 feet of a single roadway, that's when people are really trying to, they're trying to exit through the entrance and things like that start happening?
Yeah, with a car, you know, and obviously, a car's different than a, than a large, heavy-duty truck and trailer, but a car being on average six to seven feet wide, it can definitely accommodate two-way traffic on a 20-foot. And actually, if I understand, the T District Code, T5 or T6 actually mandates that the maximum allowable width for those driveways is 20. Yeah, I'm getting an odd-
T5 and T6?
Yeah, that's the more urban, downtown kind of core type. And so, and those are set up for a two-way type application.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Mrs. Strunk, I saw you.
And, and this is a bridge until the adoption of the codification of the comp plan. So, so we'll have time to see how it works and-
And we'll learn.
Polish it, and polish it up for the, for that.
Anything further? Anyone, anyone further? All right. I don't have a motion. Do I?
Yes.
I do? I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I didn't write down. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We have, the claim document is up next. Do I have a motion?
To approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, second from Alderman Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of five to two, motion carries. Okay. And last, but not least, I believe that's correct. Oh, and, and before we get too deeply into it, we need to modify the agenda to include an executive session. And I apologize, I should have done that on the front end. We need a quick item related to legal, what do we call it? Potential litigation. Oh, pending litigation.
So, move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Walker, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Motion, the agenda's amended. Next item is request authorization to advertise for an engineering inspector in the Starkville Engineering Utilities Department. This was also one of the presentations, quasi-presentation made, and, and I need to give kind of a reasoning, a rationale behind this. Same sort of thing as, as I had mentioned before, some of the things that I have been able to see by being in DRC, the developments that come in and are not, that are, that are putting infrastructure in the ground, for example, storm drains, manholes, infrastructures, water lines, sewer lines, that sort of thing. When we have a project, it comes out, in some cases, when the developer is at the end of it and we go to TV it, we find that it was not installed properly, and then they end up being delayed and having to rip it out in order to make it as it should be, either proper materials, proper bedding. So one of the things I have researched and determined that there are a lot of communities, or some communities, that have an engineering inspector, and which is not an engineer, but an engineering inspector in the sense that they look at the front side of a project and make sure that it is being done correctly so that we can, on the back end, know that we're not going to create a problem for the developer in terms of either timing or having to rip projects up or rip pipes out because they weren't installed correctly. And we've had a number of those. So I think it is better for us in the long run to get on the front side of this, this issue than it is on the backside. And so my hope is, particularly with all the infrastructure we're going to be putting in in the Utilities Department, in Pleasant Acres, any number of other projects that the Utilities Department is going to put in, they're going to share this cost with our engineering or community development, I guess, engineering department, in the sense that the, the shared cost of this individual will inure to the benefit of the city on our own projects as well as development projects in the community. So that's kind of the why and wherefore of it. So anyway, questions of me or, or Mr. Kemp, or the Mr. Kemp? Either Mr. Kemp. So, I'm sorry, Alderman, yes.
As I said Friday, I believe I'm going to support this tonight. I feel like it's a position that's going to paper itself in the long run, because over the years, just in my tenure here, we have seen multiple times, again and again, where we see drainage projects and pipes that were not installed properly several years ago. They're kind of like time bombs, and in time, we get to them and figure out, oh, that this wasn't installed right, it's on us. So if we can catch that stuff on the front end, it's going to have the developer do it right the first time, it'll save us a lot of money on the back end. So-
Thank you. Well, and I think that that will be inure to both the city and the developer's benefit in that sense. So Alderman?
Move approval.
Oh, okay. I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Little. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all. Well, that, that concludes the-
Moving on to closed session.
All right. I have a motion to go into closed session for determination of whether or not we need to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Little, uh, Miller, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. If you would, please-